The work session for the Annapolis City Council on Thursday, June 8th, 2023 will be called to order at 3:00 P. M. At this time, whatever one willing and able, please join us for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. City Attorney, please present the item.
First item on the agenda is ID 10823, City Dock Design.
Right, if we could bring everybody forward. Missing one. You in wait for Eileen or you good?
Eileen is going to join us and just... She wanted to get some water. It does, it's on. I'm just not talking very close to it. Okay, well, good afternoon. My name is David Gerald. I'm the Director of Public Works, and I will have the folks to the right of me introduce themselves.
Hi, Bryce Turner, BCT Design Group, Architect/Planner.
Burr Vogel, Project Manager, Department of Public Works. Eileen?
Eileen Fogarty, City Dock Resiliency Project Coordinator.
So, we will get started on the slides.
As Mr. Gerald is pulling up the slides, I first of all want to thank the council for coming this afternoon, and I want to thank everyone who's joined us in the audience. What we'd like to do today is give the council an overview of the new city dock design, the location of what are the major items in the park, as well as the location for the Maritime Welcome Center. And then the last part of the presentation will be on oh fifteen twenty-three, oh fifteen twenty-three, but majority of this is going to be an overview of where the city has come with the park. Thank you so much.
Okay, and thank you, Eileen, for that introduction. So, we haven't actually talked to the council for a little while about the project. I think we were scheduled to present back in maybe April and got bumped off the agenda. So, we're happy to be back today to make this presentation. So, as you all know, Hillman Garage is opening next week on Wednesday, the fourteenth. So, we're... It's been... Yeah, thank you. Thanks to the great team that we have working on. It's been a very successful project. It was completed on time, on budget, and with very high quality. So, we're very happy about that. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, so we're going from the 428 spaces that were in the old garage to 590 spaces in the new garage. We're going to have solar panels up on top, as you can see in the picture here. We've got full storm art management, so 125% of treatment of the design storm. We're going to have EV chargers built in, nine EV chargers with the capability to add a lot more in the future. Gateless entry, among a lot of other really nice qualities in this new garage. So, it's really state-of-the-art, and I think everybody is going to like it. We took some of the business owners through it yesterday, and everybody was wowed by the new garage. So, we look forward to the grand opening on the fourteenth. So, just a short description of how we got here. It's a P3 arrangement, so public-private partnership for both the garage project and the city dock project. It's been a successful model for a number of reasons. One is that we have an extremely strong team who showed their capabilities on the garage and is going to continue to outperform for the city dock project. I'm confident of that. It's just a great design and construction team. We were able to move straight to design of these projects because of the funding that was provided through the P3. So, we actually started the design for city dock before the completion of the garage, which was a nice feature, because otherwise we would have had to advertise both projects. And also the contribution that we got from the garage towards the construction funding for the city dock project. So, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the funding picture that we have today. We estimate the total project cost for city dock, and this is on the Dock Street side, is 54 million. Twenty-four point five of that's coming from the concession payment that we received from the garage. Ten million is coming from the state, plus there was additional funding that was approved during this legislative session by the state. So, that's coming not in FY '24, but in FY '25. We got 3.2 million of design funds from federal EDA, and additional 3.4 million. So, all of those add up to about 40 million. We're also confident that we're going to get funding from FEMA, because this is ideal project for FEMA funding, and they've got a lot of resilience funding available right now. So, we're working closely with them to determine what that amount of funding is going to be. But it's going to be significant. And then we also have... We still have to do the flood mitigation work on the Compromised Street side. The 29 million that's listed there, 22 million plus 7 million. We have validated that number. We originally got that number from a competitive bid that we put out. We were a little bit skeptical, but we have validated that with Wyden Turner. So, what we're doing right now is de-scoping some of the work on the Compromised Street side, based on the performance of the temporary flood mitigation on that side, and backing off on some of the really, really conservative estimates that we have for some of the rainfall impacts on that project. So, we're working to de-scope that and try to fit it within the amount of budget that we're going to have. I also want to mention that one of the great things that Wyden Turner did on the garage project is minority contracting. We've talked about that a lot related to this P3 project, but they were very aggressive and very successful in subcontracting out a lot of the work to minority businesses, and they're going to do exactly the same for the city dock project. So, they do that for most of their projects, and they know how to do it, and they know how to be successful in doing that. So, it's been a good new story on the garage project, and we expect it to be as well for the city dock project. So, with that, I'm going to move to the next slide and pass it on to Burr Vogel for a conversation about resiliency.
So, we have three strategies for dealing with the tidal waters that are increasingly flooding downtown with effects and increasing frequency. The first strategy is to raise the bulkhead at Newman Street up to 4.5, and that'll be done under the Compromised Street project, as long with the capability to add a deployable barrier to take us up to a consistent eight-foot level. The next strategy is a variety of flood barriers, some that flip up and some that slide up, kind of like a pocket door that comes up out of the ground, and I've got some photos of those in one of the next two slides. And the last strategy is to just simply raise the elevation of the land. So, we've got some walls and elevated land barriers. Next slide, please. So, I'll walk through each of those strategies, and I'll start up at the Naval Academy Gate Zero and work the way down towards Eagle Alley. The purple that we see there, that's primarily going to be walls and raised elevations, coming all the way down towards the boardwalk, just to the right of the fountain that we see there. And then, as we move to the left past the park, we start to get into our deployable barriers, where we are largely going to be using things that just sink into the ground and then come up. They float on their own as needed, do not require any pumps or electricity, any kind of mechanical assistance. As we swing around the dingy dock at the head of Eagle Alley, we come down to an area, the story wall, where we are going to have some fixed glass barriers there. And then... Actually, I'm sorry. Those are going to be flip-up barriers, those lay down flat, and those raise up. And then, as we move to Donner Park, that's where the fixed glass barriers will sit on top of a knee wall. So, our major remaining challenge is that yellow area to the bottom right, where you see TBD. We really do need to figure out a solution that protects us from any kind of backdoor flooding through that parking lot between the chop tank and the Fleet Reserve, as well as really as we continue all the way down Compromised Street, past the Fleet Reserve to the hotel. We'll need to protect the city against flooding to that consistent eight-foot level. If we leave any hole, it pretty much renders all of our work more or less useless. So, that's still an area. Those costs, we haven't really designed the solution yet there, and those costs are not reflected on the previous slide.
Are you guys okay for some questions? Or do you want to hold those till the end?
I'm fine with taking a question.
Ottoman Annette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the dock area, and I'm trying to figure out how you get to the boats. And you've got the fixed walls, you've got passive walls. Do you not go to the dock when there's...
You do. When the tides are low, it will look very much the way it does today, except for that elevated park in the middle. So, you'll be able to walk just right down a promenade, although that'll be redone. And I know that we actually have some pictures of that later on in the presentation. I think Bryce or Eileen are going to be speaking to those. So, you'll see more isometric views, and it'll be a little bit more clear then. But essentially, if you're sitting at one of the boats along where the boardwalk is today, you'll be walking up some stairs to get back and forth, left and right, as it shows on this picture.
Okay.
And that's really... This is really Bryce's realm. He'll speak to this very well.
But I think one other really key piece of information is that the 4.5 that's listed on here, that's the elevation without the pop-up barriers. The pop-up barriers are really there for storm surge, so that will be very occasional, hopefully very infrequent. But the 4.5 that we have, that's going to be the sort of the static height without the pop-ups, will protect from the high tides, but allow you to get to the water. So, the pop-ups will only be up during storm events, large storm events, tropical storms, hurricanes.
So, I assume later on, I think you're going to do the presentation, the joint committee's got, but we heard a FEMA height of five feet plus. So, that 4.5 isn't five feet. So, then I need some help when we get to that part of the presentation.
I can speak to that a little bit now. We are protecting against storm surge to the elevation of eight feet. It's just those barriers only deploy when needed. So, we will provide flood protection well down the road. After we complete this project, there will be an opportunity to adjust our FEMA flood pain maps that could allow for construction. But that's still the city's decision, whether we would want to allow construction below the level of our expected high tides. It really would depend on how much we trust all of this stuff to work.
Okay, thank you.
Finn Lysen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Donner Lot, what happens to it? I don't see a barrier around it to protect it. So, would that just be allowed to flood when...
As currently designed, yes. The Donner Lot would flood. That park would flood.
Okay. And the restaurant, they're doing their own thing, or is there some coordination to... What's happening?
There is coordination. They are built to an elevation of five. So, it would take a major storm to flood the restaurant. But as I've kind of maybe implied here, that we are looking at options to protect along the waterfront instead. So, this portion here from Donner Park, as you move down towards the Fleet Reserve, we're still evaluating options to do something that doesn't involve eight-foot-high walls in the parking lot or along Compromised Street. That really wouldn't be attractive, and it's got some other downsides with respect to impacts to, say, the boat show. So, again, sort of budgets allowing, my preference would be to protect along the waterfront, and that's really the cleanest solution. It's just a little bit more expensive, quite a bit more.
Okay. And I think I heard you say we're going to hear more about the protection of Alex Haley Plaza and the story wall. Did you say you had a picture?
Yes, do you have a question about that in particular?
No, I just want to see what it's going to look like. I'm looking at the diagram here, and I see passive horizontal barrier. I really know what that looks like, so...
If we can go forward one slide, there's a great picture of it here. So, here's how things would look with... In the top left, how things would look when you don't have a storm condition, a storm surge condition. We just have our passive barriers there are in the ground, and things look more or less the way they do today with some landscaping improvements. Is there any specific questions I can address?
Well, I can ask now. Does the story wall rise with the barrier?
No, it stays in place. The barrier just flips out.
So, it's on the outside of the barrier?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
Oliver Savage?
Thank you. Go back a slide. I also share some of the concerns about the Donner Park. I don't know what the plan would be, but I think, like you said, I don't see how we could put in structures along the street that would make sense. And I think...
None of those solutions really look good. I've got pictures of them, actually. I'll pass them around if that's... Am I allowed to do that?
Yep.
Maybe I'll ask Eric to.
I mean, I think... So, I guess the point I'm getting to is I think if from... Bottom line, we need to do what we need to do to protect entirety of our city dock area and downtown area. And from an engineering perspective, I could see where it would probably make more sense to do what we need to do to go along the waterfront. And I know that's... We might need to be a bit more aggressive as far as our approach with some of those property owners, but if that's what we need to do to protect the city, that's what we need to do. But I guess we need to know at some point what those barriers might be, and I guess having a design that we could approach some of those property owners with.
We're having those conversations. It's really a budget challenge right now. So, as we try to save money on the pump stations, I can reuse that to protect along the waterfront. And that would look simply the way things do on the north side here, ultimately. You just see that bulkhead would extend all the way down through the Fleet Reserve, and it would have a pop-up barrier on top of it.
Right. And so, the walkways are where you're having the pop-up...
Correct, yes. Just... Any other questions?
No, that's good.
Eileen, over to you.
They are working... Oliver Savage, they are in communication and working with the restaurants, with the hotel, with the Fleet Reserve. The Fleet Reserve are probably the ones that communicate the most. So, we have to come up with a solution for all those businesses, and we will.
And that's going to be part of the whole project, is entirety of...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And just for the council's information, when we get finished with the presentation, Burr has some good drawings that he's going to share with all of you, and there'll be plenty of time today to answer those questions. So, the process has been really intense, as the council is well aware. In the winter, the City Dock Action Committee endorsed the new Active Park Plan, which you're going to see today. The Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission met together and concurred with the direction of the new park plan, again, because it is significantly not different, but it is much more active than the earlier images. Next slide, please. And at the same time, there has been a lot of effort taking place with Chris Haley and the legacy team. Their focus has been on this tremendous opportunity, where you have, first of all, the park to kind of weave an entire story into, but you also have the Welcome Center and Burdah's House. And they have been looking at finally being able to honor and tell a history of African-Americans who built businesses on the water, free enslaved residents, who have contributed both to the economic growth of our downtown and the cultural life of Annapolis. So, that had been all their focus over the last few months. Next slide, please. And Bryce Turner is now going to share with the council the new design for the park and the location of the Waterfront Welcome Center.
Thank you, Eileen. And I also want to congratulate all of us for getting this far in the process. It feels like we're halfway. We're not really halfway, but it does feel good with Hillman Garage opening up. I also think that we really should be incredibly proud of what we're doing with this project. It is the best example I know of in America, where a community is leveraging green infrastructure in order to create economic development, and not by building a bunch of buildings, but by creating green amenities. And I think it's going to mean really good things for the city as it exists today. It's going to be such an improvement, so many amenities. So, we want to share with you some of the things that have changed since we last met with you, because it has been at some time. One of the things we've been looking at, this is a diagram that just talks about different areas of city dock, and it's helping us organize some of our design and informing some of the story that we want to tell at the water's edge. So, starting closest to Dock Street there is the Active Park area, and we really see that as a place where we can, you know, celebrate some of the activities that have gone on at city dock throughout all these years, throughout this history. And it will also be an area that will have games, some tabletop games. It will have movable furniture. It will have some trees, small trees and pots. But all of it will be able to be moved and stored for the boat show in that particular area. Then the lawn is more of a place of respite, a little more contemplative kind of green space that will be obviously a very attractive space. It'll be able to be programmed in a number of different ways. And then we have a fountain and a pergola, which is really an area that we think we can do more of this storybook telling about how people got here, you know, how people got to Annapolis, whether in the boats that they came in, whether it was, you know, from the British Isles or enslaved folks who came here in ships, or watermen, or any other type of kind of maritime use. It could kind of be celebrated here, but all about some of that. And I'll show you an example in a minute with the pergola. And then we really have the gateway, where the Susan B. Campbell Park, we've decided that we'd like to get some greenery there. It should be more forward-looking, looking out towards the Chesapeake Bay. We have a great opportunity for some sculpture, we think, right on the very corner there, on the point, that we hope will be very progressive and looking forward. Next slide, please. So, all of this has kind of manifested itself in this plan. And the consensus plan that we developed with the City Dock Action Committee was really a much simpler plan, and we were all working as volunteers. And we knew and hoped that as we got a very talented landscape architect on board, which we have now, that we would be able to design more interest into city park. And that's mostly been about this fountain area, especially in the geometry that we've created. So, when you look at this, you start to see how you can take a walk from the market house, loop all the way around the fountain and back. And we think some of those kind of programmed walks could be helpful, especially with some of this storytelling that we want to be able to accomplish. So, this is the new plan. We have areas... One of the things, you know, four and a half years ago, when I began as a volunteer on this, one of the things we really heard a lot about was access to the waterfront, people that wanted to be able to come to the waterfront and just as a resident, and be able to get in a kayak or just observe, what have you. So, we've got some opportunities for that. And we certainly hope that ferries and other things will be able to drop people off here as they traverse across the Chesapeake. So, we have a Waterfront Welcome Center there, which is next to Burdah's House, and we think that that location will work very well for the programming that we have. We will be storing kayaks there and waterboards and other types of flotation devices. So, I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Next slide, please, David. So, and this shows a little bit more of the Waterfront Welcome Center, which would have a visitor function. It would be a welcoming function where we could direct people to the right location. It'll be very important to have public facilities there for toilets, as well as boater facilities for the record number of boaters that we have coming to Annapolis every year. And those really need to be world-class accommodations, much improved from where they are today, I think we would all agree. We also will have the Harbor Master here on the second floor above this space and a small conference area. Next slide, please. So, these are some of the new images that have been created. They're still very conceptual. The materials are not meant to be identified necessarily yet, but you get the idea of the promenade that's along the waterfront. So, this is, you know, I'll say, standing on the north side of Eagle Alley, looking out towards the water. And you'll see how this is the Active Park on the left. We thought there was a great opportunity, possibly have some swing sets here, and they would be such that they could work with the boat show or be removed altogether. Also, opportunities and games for young people, beautiful landscaping that gets some color in here as well. And we're trying to slope and ramp everything, so we have minimal walls that we have to deal with, other than for the flooding. Next slide. So, some examples of the fountain. And the fountain that we're contemplating here would be recessed, and it would be able to be covered up for events like the boat show. It's very shallow water. It's meant to be fun for kids. It really is a dancing water-type fountain that you've seen, a splash fountain. Next image, please. So, this is, as Eileen mentioned, you know, the Cultural Legacy Committee has provided a lot of interesting information for us to work with. One of the things that we want to incorporate here is a pergola or trellis-type structure, and we think that that structure could actually kind of echo or reflect some of the various ships that have come in and out of Annapolis Harbor. It'll be, you know, interpretive design, but we think it could be very interesting and could also tell a story there. Next image. So, this is an early conceptual view of the fountain. You see how it has a couple steps around it, and it can be covered. And then the trellis element is back behind that, and that seems to be a great place for a bandstand when we have the Songwriters Festival or other type of events there. It would help us with the programming, and we think it adds a real level of interest here with the landscaping. Next. So, this is along the water side, and this is exactly the area we were just talking about. So, this is what it will look like. You'll see a ramp that ramps up from the promenade, the lower level where you access boats, and you'll come up on that ramp to this upper level, which has to be wide enough really for firetruck access. And then you ramp up again where it says Dock Street there to the park itself. And this will get us up to elevation eight, the top of that wall. The top of that wall will be elevation eight, and then the park itself drops down another 18 inches, so it kind of forms a seat wall around the green park. Next, please. So this is the, you know, the overall plan. Donner Park will be a green park as well. I just wanted to mention one other thing about the flooding of some of these various areas. You know, there are a lot of people, and some of the experts with resiliency in flooding, really believe that you have to retreat from the water a little bit. This seems really crazy to us because of the fact that we have a historic city that we want to protect, and we will protect it. But for certain areas that are green to flood is much healthier from an ecological perspective. And so I think, you know, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and others would probably encourage us to allow some of that. If the entire world comes along to the East Coast and puts up walls, we're going to push the water even higher in other areas. And so, it's a little bit of a tricky element, and obviously, hopefully, it won't be flooding in these next 20 or 30 years, except on some very rare occasions, because it is protected up to elevation five approximately. Next image. So, I'm sorry, back one, David. Yes?
What are the dotted lines telling us?
So the dotted lines are just some pedestrian paths that we've outlined, you know, different walks that you could take. And, you know, we may even want to describe one as a mile and a half walk, say, you know, if you start at the Market House and go around four times, or whatever it may be. But just to, there's something about being able to walk back and forth out to the Water's Edge and come back a slightly different way that is more interesting for pedestrians. So, I also want to talk a little bit about this waterfront Welcome Center and why we've located it where we have it.
Can I just spread one question?
Yeah, before you get into the waterfront center, I'm just a little bit curious on what is that transition space between Susan Campbell and the fountain, that gray rectangular area? Sorry, I didn't...
Yeah, that's okay. That's the trellis or pergola, and call it the bandstand.
Okay. Will that have sort of an amphitheater effect, or?
It really won't. I mean, it will for the lower Susan Campbell Park, yes. So, you know, a band could face either direction, and if they face the water side, then the park would be a little bit lower, and it would have kind of an amphitheater effect.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that's trellis and a platform, just a flat platform. Yes?
Thank you. This is kind of a good, I was going to wait on this question, but this is kind of a good example of it. Have you, so for the overall project, I guess from an engineer's standpoint, have you done the assessment of downtown as far as how far we would need to bring the wall around the south to the edge, all the way back to compromise, to ensure we don't get any during a large flood event, water that's going to come up, compromise and kind of bypass all of our efforts here?
Well, absolutely. We've spent countless hours discussing that. It must be closed so there is no backdoor flooding, of course. The challenge is that we also have private property owners that, where we can't really build on their property, certainly without their approval, and funds potentially. So what we're looking at is how we can stop this. It really needs to get all the way to the bridge, basically, and all the way around.
Less of money, like, have somebody actually done the modeling to see how far we need to go, exactly?
We have.
Would it basically have to go all the way to the bridge?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, or you cross the street and put up a temporary barrier during a flooding condition that gets us up to some higher ground elsewhere, but it's, you know, that's not a very good solution. When people are maybe trying to evacuate.
The barriers would be much slower there because the ground elevation is high.
Right.
I'll repeat that. Any kind of barrier we build along compromised street could be a foot or a foot and a half in many of those areas as we get close to the grid, the bridge, because the elevation of the street is rising. From Newman Street all the way to the bridge, it just slowly slopes up. It gets a lot easier up there, in other words.
And, yeah, I could see that. And so for the entire cost they had up earlier, presumably that includes the entire stretch as far as going all the way to the bridge, or is that, no?
Does not.
So the funding is just for kind of area and green that we're seeing here?
Correct. Plus the, what we call the Newman Street Pump Station and the Bulkhead at Newman, right next to the Fleet Reserve.
Okay.
So it is kind of incomplete.
Yeah.
But there's more money coming, and then there's some cost savings going on. So we're going to make it work.
But, well, I guess presumably what, you'd roll one project into the next one? Because, I mean, it's, like you were saying, there's no use really doing any of this if the water can just get around it, but they'd have to be right after the other to kind of make it work.
Correct, correct. It'll be, it'll be two, maybe three, construction contracts, but it'll all, it's all being integrated, ideally seamlessly.
So, and if I could ask about funding a little bit, because again, I'm thinking about all the price tag, how we're going to pay for it all. So we set up the Resilience Authority to try to be one of the mechanisms to help fund this. Has, what's the status of that kind of dialogue, conversation with? I know they're relatively new and only just got their executive director a few months back, I think.
So I think Matt is here.
How's that going?
Right behind me. So he knows about it. We've talked to him about it. We've given him a notional number that we would like to see from them. Because you're right, I think that was part of the genesis for creating the Resilience Financing Authority of this project, and this was supposed to be the first one funded out of the box.
Yeah.
So we've talked about a number. He's, he didn't get up and walk away from the table when we mentioned the numbers, so we're optimistic. But, yeah, I think we should get some money from the authority for this project. Okay.
Thank you.
So the, you know, the project will be phased, of course. There are certain areas we can get hold of, and we have all of the city-owned property that we're dealing with here. So I just want to get back and talk about the waterfront Welcome Center just a little bit. We do, originally with the action plan, we had planned to enlarge and modify the existing Harbor Master, Master Building, in order to create space for pumps, electrical, improved boater facilities, et cetera. What we found is that was getting very unwieldy there because of the size of all these things. You know, at City Dock now, there are these various, I'm trying to remember what we call the electrical panels down there in the birdhouse. The birdhouse. There's a lot of stuff there because of the Boat Show, as well as other festivals, et cetera. So, you know, the idea was floated that, number one, we don't want to sever the park from downtown, from Dock Street. And so we began looking at, you know, sightlines and the opportunity to locate the Welcome Center with its various uses closer to where the users of that building would actually be, which is in that, the little inlet there where we will have a floating dock for accessible kayaking, for boaters to arrive. There'll be a secondary dinghy dock there. And so, we looked at some sightlines too, because we are very sensitive to the view shed. So the next slide will show you an example of that. And there's no perfect location, of course, for anything at City Dock. We're trying to preserve what we can. An asphalt parking lot is absolutely the flattest, most unobtrusive type surface you can have, right? And the Boat Show loves it because it works really well for them. But, in reality, there's so much more that we want to do at City Dock. So this shows you an example. If you were standing at the door to the Market House and looking out towards the water, you can see your cone of vision here that is blocked by a couple of the buildings, 110 Compromise and the existing Harbor Master Building. And by locating our building, the waterfront Welcome Center, to, closer to Burdis and closer to the water where the uses are, you get something like this, which really we thought about once the feasibility report came out and we realized there was a precedent for another building here in this location. So that cone of vision actually does increase. Now, I can tell you, it's not perfect. Depends on where you're standing, right? Of course. But we do think that tucked away, there is a better location from an urban design perspective. And so I think that's, I think that's important. And so we hope to come back to you soon with the design of that building, which the city has now authorized us to begin. Next image, please. I also just want to mention that, you know, City Dock has historically been bustling with activity, right? Maritime uses of all kinds. And we actually want to get back to some of that activity. This is an early photo of Burdis House, the second building from the left. That's the structure that's next to it. But, and if you go through these, David, just quickly, there are a couple of other images I just wanted to share, you know, some early maps of City Dock. City Dock has constantly changed its footprint. You know, it's now tighter than it was in that image and that map, in some places, and wider in others. And so this is another photo of that area near, that's Burdis House on the right, looking up towards the Capitol. And you can see some of the structures that have always been at City Dock. And while the maritime uses have changed, there's still a need for them. Next. Some other maps of the Burdis Basin and Hell's Point. And then if you just forward one more, these are some of the early sandborne maps. And so buildings constantly from 1897, which is on the right, to 1921, have constantly been moving around there. And we think there's obviously a precedent for appropriately scaled buildings. And I think that's the critical thing, is that the architecture really be sensitive to the context of Annapolis. So this is a 2018 image of City Dock, and you can see the existing Harbor Master Building there and what, you know, I think tends to block your eye and your view in that location. But, obviously, it's the asphalt parking lot and those framed buildings that were torn down that was really, you know, the cardinal sin. And to put up an asphalt parking lot was a disaster. And it was terrible for the water quality. Water runs off here. And we think that through these improvements, that's going to be a major advantage and an investment that you're making is going to pay off over years. Next. Just one more, I'm almost finished. One more image looking back at the parking lot in Susan Campbell Park. And then, you know, that's what we've got, and this next image is what we want and what we think we can get. And it's going to be such an incredible difference that I think it's going to be something that we'll all be very proud of.
All right, man.
We would like, if it's the council's desire, to give particularly the council members who were not at rules or environment, a very quick overview of how all this ties to O-15. And we'll be very brief to tie the park into the ordinance.
But before we go there...
I'll get a couple of questions first, yeah?
This slide is a great place to stop. First of all, I appreciate the history. I actually kind of like some of the historical views. I'm sorry we lost it, but we have the Burdis House and we have the Welcome Center. And I'm, and I know there's been some discussion and various give and take, but what is the Burdis House going to be doing, and what is the Welcoming Center going to be doing? And I see Wendy O'Sullivan in the audience. What is the National Park's gateway to the Chesapeake? How does that fit into all of this? And will we have an opportunity to hear about those parts of the plan?
I can start. Can I start?
Yeah.
So, we have a lot of uses for that building, right? So, first of all...
Which, which building?
For both buildings, because they're going to be connected.
Thank you.
So first of all, we're going to be taking down the old bathrooms, the old showers, the old laundry facilities, the Harbor Master, the Conference and Visitors Bureau as well is going to go and need to be relocated. We are one of the most significant waterfront cities in the country, and we have pretty embarrassing boater facilities, so we need to build back beautiful, first-class boater facilities. And in this two-story building, you know, why we moved away from putting the Harbor Master in the old location is, why would you build a building in the middle of the sightline just for toilets, basically, right? And a viewing deck? So we moved away from that idea and said, let's move the Harbor Master to the harbor, put the Harbor Master in the front of the waterfront so that they can do the job from there and look back at Eagle Valley. But in this new building, and we haven't got a basement shot on this, but we have to put additional bathrooms, boater bathrooms, boater showers, because the boater bathrooms have to be different from the public bathrooms, the public restrooms, boater laundry facilities. Boating nowadays, you need, you know, a boater business center. You need a place for boaters to get off their boat and, you know, do their work, get their Amazon groceries delivered. It's a new, it's a new game, right? So all that sort of stuff has to happen, and potentially, some of it in the basement, some of it on the first floor. And then on the first floor, we have to have the Conference and Visitors Bureau, and they're working on a concept, a retail concept, to have some retail in their shop. And potentially, they're working on a model right now that's going to be out at the BWI Airport, Thurgood Marshall Airport. But there'll be a retail component from them. There'll, of course, be the National Park Service in there. There'll be some Harbor Master facilities. And because the Burdis House is the last, the last waterman's house on the dock, we think we have an opportunity to bring back some waterman uses, potentially. So we're pitching an idea, potentially, for a small oyster bar that just does a few things well, you know? Does a rockfish sandwich, some oysters, and a beer, right? These models are in Newport Beach, you see in Newport, sorry, not Newport, in Newport, a little kind of roller door thing where potentially on a Thursday night, watermen could bring a boat in and they could unload, and we could create that feel. You don't have that feel at City Dock anymore. You can't tell that a waterman ever worked at City Dock. We should bring back some of that feel. And because on the Prince George Street side, we'll have an installation that will talk about the waterman's contribution, and there'll be beautiful images in black and whites, we think it would be a good idea to have a small oyster bar there. Now, it might happen, it might not, but it's another use for that ground floor, and I think it's a really good use, and it's a placemaking use. And then, also, now, in the old days, you used to be able to drive your car to City Dock and drive your car onto a ferry and get across the Chesapeake Bay. But we don't do that anymore. But in our modern interpretation of that idea, that could also be somewhat of a ferry terminal, a place where you roll your bike onto a 100% electric ferry, and you go across Bar Creek, or you go across the Severn to some of the other facilities. And that's a modern interpretation of the ferry port. And then on the second floor, the Harbor Master needs at least 1,000 square feet, so that's an idea, I believe, and it's up to the council here, that we have an opportunity to get some conferencing space up there, a place where, as the city, we can showcase the city from a conference room, but we can also share that space with the National Park Service, with the Conference and Visitors Bureau. Maybe people could lease a space like that. Maybe you could use a balcony on this facility to hold events so that we could show off the city from that balcony. We could raise money there. We could monetize it. So I think that, you know, it's worth getting a decent-sized building that has multiple uses in, all in a two-story, within-the-envelope building, in scale with the surrounding historic district. But there's a lot of users under one roof. Now, not everyone might agree with those ideas, but I think, you know, it could be fabulous. Newport, our current city manager was the city manager. Newport, our current city manager was the city manager in Newport when they built their waterfront Welcome Center. It's a very successful one. We believe we deserve one as well. And that's just a number of the multiple users there.
Thank you for that explanation. If I could just amplify a little bit, my first intensive exposure to Annapolis is when my agency sent us here for a week of training. We stayed in the historic ends. But I often felt that Annapolis could be much more of a center for government agencies in DC, embassies, places like that to come. That's what actually led to me wanting to move here, was that week of exposure to the city. And I'll never forget it. So I kind of like, we may not get to all your ideas, but I do like, I like the concept. So, thank you.
Thank you. Otamund Finlayson, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we're looking at, and I, you know, expanded it on my iPad, and it's not labeled, but the, there's going to be a new building in front of the Burdis House. And that's the building that you're referring to right now, where the Harbor Master is going to be. Because there's no...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I should let these guys answer, because I still...
Yeah.
And that is not a correct floor plan either, I don't think at all.
Has our Harbor Master weighed...
Puzzled me. I'm sorry?
Okay, well, we know we have to put the Harbor Master somewhere.
Right.
So has she weighed in on what her needs are for this location?
She has. Yeah, we've met with her a couple of times, and also Tyler, her assistant. They need about 1,000 square feet. And, you know, I've tried to lay out space for them, but they really prefer, I think, just to do it themselves. And so we've got a rectangle for them that's 1,000 square feet. And, you know, and we have some toilets that they can use. We need toilets on that upper level, too, small ones. But they need storage, they said, and we've got a nice little space for them to have some storage. But all in all, it's 1,000 square feet.
Okay, I think that's important to me, that the Harbor Master be taken care of. You know, we have employees and we have services, and I think that should not get lost, because the Harbor Master did not mention...
Yeah, there's a lot in there, as the mayor was saying. We've got the Harbor Master, and we've also included boater facilities and the welcome function, the National Park Service as well, which we kind of saw within the original Burdis House.
My other question, and we don't have all the slides that you have up here, so we've been trying to catch up or keep up. Going back to the slide, and it was number 12 up there that showed the barriers all the way around. My question has to do with the, I can't think of the terms, the pilings. You know, we had those pilings replaced the last time we redid City Dock. So are all of the pilings going to be removed to be raised up, or are they at eight feet now? Mr. Burr, this is probably your thing. Are they at the height that's needed? Or what happens with that? Is that part of the whole reconstruction?
The bulkhead is not being changed.
Okay.
It will flood. The bulkhead will flood when it gets above five, when it gets to elevation five.
It will flow, you say?
A flood.
Flood?
So, yeah, it'll go, if, when the water gets up above elevation five, above sea level, it will cover a portion of that area until it gets up to the park, where it goes all the way up to eight.
Okay.
And the flood barriers are behind the existing bulkhead, landside.
On landside, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Otamund O'Neil?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So the $100 million question is, how are we funding this waterfront center? Because I'm guessing it's not included in the 15...
That is included in the numbers you have.
In the $54 million, it includes this building?
But I'm also chasing other sources on top of that, like I'm chasing other sources for, or we are chasing multiple sources. We feel pretty confident in the money, so, but we don't want anyone to reject us because we look like we're doing too well, so we're acting like... It's terrible. We need every dollar.
And do we have an approximate timeline from start to finish? How long the project would...
Do you want to take that or I can take that?
I'm thinking about three years. We're going to chunk it into phases that we can squeeze in between the boat shows. So if we start next year in the late winter, early spring, we'll be able to finish up the first phase, which will be pretty limited, then go on pause for a few weeks in October, and then kick off the major construction portion over the following year. So that would be the fall of '24 into '25. That's when you'll see the most disruptive construction activity. Then the third phase would be to finish up all of these deployable flood barriers following the '25 boat show. That's kind of how I see the major phases of construction. We can fit in, once we complete design for this Welcome Center and any modifications to the Burdis House, we can kind of fit that in to the construction schedule as the design permits.
Okay. So just the last part of that question is, I'm guessing that we take down the current Harbor Masters office, and so we're out without a Harbor Masters office for years?
There will be temporary quarters.
Yeah, no, that's right. And of course, we'll hold that off, tearing it down, you know, as long as we can, but ultimately, it will need to be torn down. We'll have to put in some other temporary quarters first, and a lot of electrical and utilities. So you really won't be without a Harbor Master function, because we've got to have it, right?
Okay, thank you.
Otamund Turner?
Yeah, could I take time to review the funding? I think Otamund O'Neil asked that question, because when you go to Slide 6, I believe, it shows the Burdis House and the waterfront Welcome Center in white, assuming that was not part of the original scope. So it's good to hear that it's in the original scope. Could you please just spend some time on the itemization of the funding? It's kind of a weird way to present it. Because when I look, and bear with me, I mean, Bryce knows my background, so you have a total project cost of $54 million, and so when I add up the numbers below it, that comes to 41. And this is specific to the City Dock project, if I'm not mistaken. It looks like you're separating out the Compromised Street project, okay?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so with that $54 million, you're still at a shortfall of $11 million, correct? If I add up the 10, the 3.2...
Yeah, that's correct. So there's a couple of pieces here that are not listed. One is the money that we're getting from the state that was approved during this legislative session, that we're getting in FY '25. Let me find the right slide here.
I thought that was the 10 million.
Yeah, Slide 4.
So...
Yeah, and then there's also the piece that we hope that the Resilience Financing Authority will provide. That's a number that's to be determined. The big number's going to be the amount that we get from FEMA.
Right.
Because we think that that's going to be significant. And when I say significant, significant even compared to some of these numbers. So that would push us over the top.
And the Compromised Street project, as we all know, has grown substantially. So that's estimated now at $29 million, of which I see about 9.8.
Yeah, and Burr can talk more about that, but that number's going to come down a lot because we're re-scoping.
So when I look at the scope of work, what are the NIC, not included amenities? When you start talking about pergolas and swing sets, do we have a furnishing allowance in this, or is that, you know, not in contract to be purchased out of latter day? I'm trying to get at what that $54 million includes.
I don't think some of those amenities have been included, but, you know, compared to the project costs, they're relatively small. So the big ones that are not included are the area that starts with 110 Compromised and goes down Compromised Street. So that remains to be determined, because we haven't designed it. We've worked a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot with the owners of 110 Compromised to try to, because that's the linchpin in that whole side, right? What we do there, they're not willing to, at least the last time we talked to them, we met with them a lot, but, and I've said that many times, that we have met with them a lot, but they don't want to spend any money in front of their property, because they spent a lot in replacing their bulkhead just a few years ago. So we need to figure that out. And then from there, the Fleet Reserve has indicated that they're interested in increasing their bulkhead. They've hired an engineer to help them with that. So we're going to keep in touch with them to coordinate that. As we move towards the bridge, as mentioned before, as we move towards the bridge, the elevation increases, so you need less wall elevation in those. So that, it gets easier once you get probably past the Fleet Reserve. So we're going to coordinate with them, but it's an easier engineering problem to solve those.
So you have a very competent general contractor, which is Whiting Turner, so I'm sure they're, you know, they're looking at proof of funding before they proceed with the work. Do you feel like we have any exposure there, that they will not start construction because they're unsure of the funding?
Well, I think that would be prudent on their part. We can start with construction either until we have full funding. So the way we've, we're confident that we're going to have full funding, let me put it that way.
Good.
We won't start on the south side on Compromised Street until we are entirely sure, but Dock Street, we're going to have full funding. So we intend to start at the Donner Lot and at Susan Campbell Park, as Burr mentioned.
Yeah.
That's because those are the easiest parts of the project from a design and construction perspective. And then we're going to gradually progress to the harder parts. So that gives us more time to work out those design solutions.
So my last question. So when you're looking at this project as a whole, under the $54 million, think of it as a building in a way that the function, the primary function of this project is flood and control. So when you're asking Whiting Turner to look at value engineering and what have you, you're not asking them to value engineer the pergolas or anything like that. You're asking them to say, look, do we have the most efficient infrastructure project here? You're looking at the function of the project, correct? Similar like you would with MVP with a building.
And really, what that means is the south side, the Compromised Street side, because that, the design that we have now, that we've bid out and that we've confirmed the price, is a pretty significant overdesign. And it was overdesigned for future capacity. As climate change happens, you get more intense storms, and so it was intentionally overdesigned, but we're going to pull back from that somewhat. The other part that is complex is the electrical on the Dock Street side. We haven't even talked about that, but that's a pretty significant design to reconfigure all the electrical on that side. So we're working through that, too, and we're going to try to value engineer that and place all of that equipment at the right place so it doesn't block the view and doesn't block the park.
Okay. Thank you very much for your patience in answering my questions.
And just as a short answer to closing a $10 million gap, you know, if we were to put in place a mechanism, say a hotel tax or something like that, that could raise us $2 million, we all know that's $10 million worth of gap we could fill just on that one idea. But the money that we're chasing and the FEMA money is, looks...
That was one of the recommendations of the Finance Committee of the SEDAC, was to raise the hotel tax.
Yep. Thank you.
If the council wishes, we would, terrific questions. We'd like to very briefly talk with council, one back, about the ordinance coming up, but before that, I wanted to mention, when we, on that one, thank you, when you look at, oh, we've talked, oh, let's go back to the plan. When you look at the plan, we've talked a lot about coordinating with the boat show, which we have. We also, and we've coordinated with the property owners, there's been a lot of work done with Watermark. They've been working with us, we've had several meetings with them, to make sure that they have and the large amount of public access that they provide, to make sure that all of that continues. Next slide. So I think it's important for us here at the city, for the council, to step back and remember that as we go along, we are not some minor jurisdiction. We are really leading the way nationally in terms of this kind of an effort. We are viewed as a preeminent historic coastal city that has chosen to work directly with the Naval Academy in coming together to have a collaborative strategy. We met last month at the Naval Academy. There were about 60 people from around 40 countries internationally, you know, Africa, Europe, South America, and I think there was someone from Canada and a few people from Asia. And they were looking to Annapolis and the Naval Academy to say, how do we do this? What's your next step? I mean, it was amazing. And one of the things, next slide, please, that they were so impressed with was the process, the planning process, the fact that the city has started with hundreds of people being involved in the general direction. The city has then gone forward, and you see with the garage opening next week, implemented the plan that the City Dock Action Committee brought forth. We're now looking at the conceptual design for the park, and our step within the next few weeks will be to bring forward and adopt an ordinance that allows these public structures to proceed. After that, there will be a lot of opportunity through the summer and the fall for the entire community to weigh in on the design of the structures. Next, please. As the council is aware, this entire area is included in the FEMA, under the FEMA flood requirements. And very briefly, FEMA requires buildings be built at five feet above sea level. The city requires another two. That's where the seven feet comes from. Next slide, please. You can see on this slide that we've got, what's amazing is that we now have, actually have the infrastructure. So many plans have one piece or another. We, the city, are going forward with an infrastructure where the park is at eight feet, the Dock Street will be at six and a half feet. We brought together a team of the authors of the Cultural Hazard Mitigation Plan, whether it together FEMA experts, Resilience Sea experts, to look at what is the simplest and most straightforward way to measure buildings that will be aligned with the FEMA requirements. You'll see on your right that currently, from sea level, it's approximately three and a half feet where buildings are measured. Given the FEMA requirements, it will be up at seven feet minimally where buildings will be measured. Next slide, please. So thinking about this issue that Eric will talk to you a little bit more about, it's not just an issue of measuring, it's also tied to the funding that several of the council have asked about. The funding, particularly for the money that we are looking at, the very large amount of money, FEMA money, the elevated infrastructure is a part of that, the elevated new public buildings is a part of that. All of these pieces have to be in place for us to receive the funding that we are hoping to get for the entire dock, the infrastructure and the new buildings. And that, we anticipate the design for all of this to be completed late fall this coming year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric to talk to you about the details of the ordinance.
Thank you. Eileen, Eric Lashinsky, Chief of Comprehensive Planning. Next slide, please. It's hard to follow that with a sad-looking slide like this. Sorry. I get the unexciting part of the presentation, but this is important. This is an ordinance that was introduced at the council in early May, I believe. It was at Planning Commission on May 18th. It was supposed to have a follow-up hearing last Thursday, got canceled. They'll have a makeup hearing this evening at Planning Commission. I believe it's coming back to council on Monday. And I believe it's coming back to council on Monday. So I want to give a bit of a rules committee, and the Environmental Matters Committee got an overview on Tuesday. I just want to go through the legislation, what it, what it's all about. It's somewhat trivial, but as with anything in this town, when you start getting into our code, it gets a little more complicated. So this image is taken directly from our city code. It shows what a lot of people would see as intuitive. When you're measuring the height of a building, going from the, the ground floor to the ridge of the building is the way we measure a building height for most of the city in that diagram there. Now, what's identified in yellow is a note on that that just says, refer to Chapter 21.56 for measurement of building height in the historic district. And then that is blown up below, so you can see what that says. For the purpose of achieving a permanent height limit, the height of a building shall not be allowed to increase because of, because of an increase in the elevation of the front setback line occurring after the effective date of this zoning code. So essentially, that was intended to kind of fix and amber the historic district, you know, despite dynamics happening around, changing conditions. The zoning code, see, first zoning code was in the 60s. We did our first comprehensive plan in 1962. And, you know, admittedly, not a lot has changed at the sea docks since Susan Campbell Park, which I think was in 1968. So now, a lot is changing, and so we're trying to catch up. So could you go to the next slide, please? So the, the idea for the ordinance is straightforward. We're simply saying that we need to, we need to allow buildings at City Dock to be measured from a flood elevation that FEMA sets. We're getting funding from FEMA. We're in a coastal hazard flood zone. We need to allow for buildings to be designed with that in mind. And we need to focus this on the City Dock, because that's where this major project is happening. And we need to, there's an urgency to this project. We have funding in place. And so it's very much focused on the City Dock area. I'm going to just talk about these two items here. These are really the only two components of the ordinance. I'm going to do the part number two first. So it says, exception criteria, exempted structures we measured from the new grade at the front setback line, not to exceed the flood protection elevation plus one foot. Next slide, please. So at the top of the slide is that same section. It's hard to see to the audience, but flood protection elevation is a term that the city has in its code to define what FEMA requires for the Sea Dock. It's five feet above sea level. And what the city then requires above that, two feet of freeboard, because we know that sometimes five isn't enough. Even King Tides will flood the, the City Dock today, and we have 60-plus days a year of flooding. Now, the one foot where that comes from is something like added insurance for floodproofing. So if you're doing any kind of enclosure below your first floor, the city requires an additional foot, and that's from our building code. So that's why the ordinance is written that way. That's really the minimum level that we want buildings to be set at to be, to be safe from flooding. So, next slide.
Omer Savage?
Yes, so you've gotten in this a little bit yesterday.
Yeah.
Or the day before, whenever it was. But the plus one foot, so you mentioned earlier in the presentation that seven feet, so should that really be changed to eight feet?
You, you mean on the, on one of the earlier slides?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that slide, that was simply showing what the city, that one foot extra is not going to be necessary everywhere, but in this location, it's a, something it's important to have.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, so it would be seven to eight for minimum, depending on the construction.
Right. Yeah. Well, this, this just gives you a glimpse of what FEMA sees when they map the City Dock, Annapolis Harbor area, you know, you could see the City Dock area, you could see the edge of Eastport. The light blue area is that AE flood zone, which is identified in this ordinance. It says FEMA has an elevation of five feet for that area. And the AE's AE flood zone, it's the, that's the area that would have a 1% chance of flooding annually, or 26% chance within a 30-year mortgage. So a lot of this is very much based on flood insurance. City has been using FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program since 1981. So that's another reason we have to kind of stay up to code on these things, to be a part of that. Next slide, please. Yes.
Omer Manet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I meant to ask you this the other day, but there's a cold front symbol on the right-hand side. Is, are we putting in a floating floodgate there? Is that what that is? In the Severn River? No. Not, okay, not currently. Just wanted to make sure. That's a good observation, though.
Another gate that floats.
But what I'm getting to now in this, at this slide, is just that first part of the legislation where we identify the area that the legislation focuses on, we want to be clear that we're talking about the FEMA flood map that includes the AE flood zone for the City Dock area. And if you go to the next slide, you know, the City Dock area is our most intensely master-planned area in the city. It's, it's had countless studies over many years. It's, you know, from a planning perspective, we do small area plans all the time, focused on very specific places with finite boundaries. The City Dock area is, is an example of that. And so the ordinance, we, you know, in the staff report that I wrote with my colleague, John Manassa, who's our floodplain manager, the idea is to be specific. So there's an amendment to the legislation that says, we should be specific about this FEMA floodplain, floodzone map, the one that includes the, the site in the City Dock's action report, which is overlaid onto this. And you can see, similar to the earlier slide, the AE flood zone overlaid on top of the height district boundaries for the historic district. And it's, it's clear kind of where that focuses. This is very much limited to the City Dock area. Next slide, please. I want to just clarify that the AE flood zone is not only referring to the City Dock area. It's a citywide, you know, impact. We, we have areas in Eastport, we have, you know, areas in West Annapolis, Murray Hill. Nothing really compares to the Sea Dock in terms of the impact of flooding, economic, cultural consequences. You just can't compare. I will say, we have recommendations in our comprehensive plan draft, which is coming out next week, that talk about Eastport, but for the present, Sea Dock is really the emphasis here. Next slide, please. You know, and, and another reason for that is this, if you look at our zoning map here, you know, we've kind of parceled out the city into small, you know, nuanced areas that have very specific guidance on what should happen where. If you just look across the harbor to Eastport, you know, you have the waterfront maritime mixed zoning district, the waterfront maritime Eastport zoning district. Both of those have their own requirements, you know, and so it's sort of, you know, we talk about comprehensive planning, it doesn't always mean you apply the exact same policy everywhere. It has to be nuanced, particularly here in Annapolis. Next slide, please. And I just want to finish with a couple excerpts from recent plans that we look to for guidance when we do legislation and looking for precedent. And so this first is just our 2009 comprehensive plan. That's the last adopted comprehensive plan. And it's, it really set the stage for the City Dock Action Plan that was completed in 2020. You could see that the recommendations here are to do that plan. And this is a, this is an overdue issue, you know, we're already experiencing impacts from sea level rise and climate change. So that sets the stage. Next slide, please. 2018, we did the Weather Together Plan, which was specifically focused on the City Dock, Historic District, which is today with a big emphasis on the City Dock area, essentially the areas that are flooding, that are at risk. And this one gets into much greater detail for the City Dock area, and really goes into a range of tools and strategies for protecting the most valuable assets to the city. And so you can see, it, it broaches the challenging topic of raising elevation, raising buildings. It says, while raising a building changes the historic relationship of the structure to its site, given the tragic losses of the physical heritage that could occur through sea level rise and coastal flooding, it may be the most appropriate preservation direction to take. You know, so it's, it's a, admittedly, it's a challenging issue, but it's one that we have to address. Next slide. And this one speaks to what we're doing. The primary strategy at the City Dock for addressing flooding is creating a flood barrier. And so it says, the interface between a raised street surface and the adjacent sidewalk and building entry elevations is of prime consideration. We're raising public right-of-way around these two new buildings at the City Dock, well, one old, one new. And that's an unusual circumstance. It's not happening anywhere else in the city, raising the right of, the public area around the buildings. Next slide. And this is the last slide, and just, it's our 2018 Citywide Hazard Mitigation Plan. And really, it just, it reemphasizes a lot of what we already know. There's 39 commercial buildings that would benefit from drainage improvements along several streets of the City Dock area. And it's, again, very specific to the City Dock as a, as a singular area for protection.
Eric, thank you very much. And I want to thank the council for your tremendous patience and interest today. We'll, all here will be glad to answer any more questions you may have.
I did want to recognize Mayor Hillman. Sorry, I didn't recognize you, Mayor Hillman. Who hasn't spoken. Omer Manet, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to slide 31, just to make sure. This says, construction to begin winter of 2024? Not this winter, but winter a year from now?
That would be this coming winter.
So it's winter of '23?
'23, '24.
Okay. I was going to say, you were trying to wait till we got out of office before you started work.
I'm going to try to push that plan a little.
Thank you.
Omer Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify, because we spoke about this again, the other day, Environmental Matters, and I think it's worth emphasizing for colleagues, but also for the public who's here, as far as what's driving this change in the flood protection elevation. And so you summarized it well in the staff report.
David.
But, you know, please, correct me if I'm wrong for the record, but my understanding is it's primarily, well, for a number of reasons. But one, FEMA is, has passed a policy that is basically saying they would like this passed. And if, I think us doing this will increase our ability to get funding through them, right? And so that's to meet that five feet you mentioned earlier. That also will allow us to continue as far as getting flood insurance downtown and as far as influencing those rates. And the other thing I mentioned, which, well, which you mentioned, which I was wondering if you could expand a bit on, because we didn't get into it too much, was the, how it facilitates for better design downtown for new buildings and renovations.
Yeah, I mean, I could try to answer, and others can chime in, but our current situation is, is that we're, we're setting the floor, first elevation kind of artificially low. You know, essentially, it's below where flooding happens today. And so the way we measure height from that point allows us not, oh, yeah. Measuring height from that lower elevation doesn't allow us to accommodate the programs that have been talked about in the other slides, you know. We, we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, I would say, you know, by, you know, starting the building below flood level, we, we can't do what is really needed for the, for the City Dock.
The only other thing I would add would be that we certainly want quality architecture here for sure. I know everyone believes that. And we don't want flat roofs generally, probably here. We want the, to be able to accommodate some interesting massing of buildings and have multiple slopes to roofs and things like that. So it would provide more flexibility if you're building at elevation seven or eight, to be able to obviously use the full advantage of the building height that is allowed.
Can I ask another question on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm not quite on that particular point, but, you know, we've mentioned on this, the slide regarding funding, a lot of different sources from different partners. Can you just go into a bit about how, or if, I think it's more a question of how, but how the partners have been included in this process? Or is that still something that's going to be looked at as far as during the design process? Because I think, you know, and I think the mayor's done quite a bit on this, I think, trying to get these, these groups connected. But I think it's important during the design to, I think, get these entities to be more committed. And that's ranging from the feds to state agencies, but also even to our state delegation. I think you've already, Navy partners. I guess not so much county, but, yeah, if you could just go into that a little bit, appreciate it.
So what's been really exciting about this project has been the whole combination of partnerships. Early on, the city partnered with Historic Annapolis Urban Land Institute. As the project went forward, we then partnered with Anarundel County, and we have been working with Matt Fleming from the Resiliency Authority directly. We were out to meet with the Resiliency Authority Board a couple of weeks ago. So that's, and Burr has been working closely with Matt. So that partnership is, is ongoing. The Navy, to me, has been the most interesting because they're undergoing a hundred-year, they have a hundred-year horizon. We have a 50-year horizon, but they have been working very closely with the city, literally getting together with the city every month to look at all of the details, particularly about the connections. In terms of our state partners, our state has been very supportive in funding, as you can see. Our federal partners, and David, why don't you address the support we've gotten from the...
Yeah, well, first, I'll tell you, I'll give you an example of the Navy partnership that we have, because they, they have a great resilience plan, but they're lagging behind us by a few years. So if, if we build our system as we've described here, we're still going to get backdoor flooding through the Naval Academy, and they recognize that. So they've agreed to move forward with the project to, to build a wall similar to the wall that they have, like along King George, that solid wall, to extend that all the way to Gate Zero, so then we can tie into that. So we'll have complete protection. So that's sort of above and beyond what their resilience plan would normally envision, but because... but because, because we have this collaboration with them, they're willing to go ahead and spend the money to tie in. As far as the federal delegation, I mean, we've gotten tremendous support from Senators Carden and Van Hollen and Representative Sarbanes. They came out, we gave them a brief, what was it, Mayor, probably two months ago, right in this room, and gave them a brief on this, and they've, they've gotten money for us in the past, and I think they will continue to in the future. They're helping with the FEMA grant, which is really the, the big one that we're counting on.
Good, and what about the, so the state, since we have a new administration, have the state agencies as well as our delegation been pulled into this process?
They have been. They gave us $10 million last year, and since we haven't started this project yet, they, they are skipping this current fiscal year, FY '24, that was just approved, but they approved, I think it was three million? $3 million for FY '25, in addition to the 10 million that they approved last year, and that just better aligns to what the actual execution of the project is.
Alderman Turner.
Yes, I just want to thank you for acknowledging my concern when the legislation was first presented to us. You know, I was, you know, I'm a nerd, and I see this FEMA map, and it's, it's called, you know, the flood insurance rate map, and when the legislation first came to us, it just referenced it as city dock, and I, and there was no FEMA correlation to that specific area. So I really want to thank you for tying it into this FEMA map, and I think that's my amendment, it's now into one, and then also tying the definition of base flood elevation as it's defined in the code. I mean, that's sort of a constant, is base flood elevation regardless of the area. So thank you for that. It is now in one amendment, and David and I talked about that yesterday, so hopefully this will be on the city council agenda for Monday night. But the question is, as we proceed, let's say over to Eastport, will this have to be another reevaluation of how we address the, that datum, if you will, or, I mean, this city dock project is very isolated because of the height, just, you know, I'm just curious about that.
I don't honestly have a sense of what the legislation would look like for Eastport, but the, the properties there are completely different, and the elevations are different, you know, you do have some sensitive areas at the, you know, public right-of-ways, you know.
Well, it's confusing, because the whole AE area is sort of our border, and you, I guess it isn't, you know, monolithic on how you treat it. I do have to ask about the welcome center, and it having a basement, is the criteria for that the same as far as evaluating the base flood elevation, or what you're going to have to do to protect it?
Well, I believe what's going to happen there is that we will need to build potentially at elevation eight, if there is a basement, in order to have another foot of freeboard, I guess you'd call it. So it does have some impact, yes, if there is a basement. But, which will be dry-proofed, of course, but I'm still trying to understand that, quite frankly, and we're just not there yet, really.
Yeah, and I was just concerned of FEMA's reaction to that, you know, in, in our application for, for funding, that, I mean, just to speak honestly, that we say, oh, by the way, we want, you know, we want to add this welcome center that has a basement, I didn't want to jeopardize the funding.
Yeah, and you know, the interesting thing about, about that is that, when this project's complete, that building is going to be completely protected.
Sure.
Right in front of it, it's going to be completely protected, so, you know, we, we haven't talked a lot to FEMA about that, we probably need to, we've, we've sort of adopted what their position is, and that's to dry-proof the basement, but, but there's going to be flood protection right in front of that.
You're right, at the perimeter, right.
So we need to have that discussion, whether that, that needs to be dry-proofed or not.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to FEMA's, you know, how they would review the application, but my understanding is that floodproofing code comes directly from them, you know, that's their methodology, or their practice.
So there's not any risk to our application as it stands? Okay. I see Burr nodding his head, so thank you very much. Thank you for indulging my questions.
Alderman Finlayson and Alderman Annett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is about the timing, the timeline, I guess, of the entire project. I think I heard Mr. Burr say that we're starting on the dockside street as opposed to the compromise street, and I just want to understand the thinking, because in my mind, compromise street has the greater problem of flooding, ongoing flooding now, so, but we're starting on dock street, so.
We would start on compromise street if we were ready, from the standpoint of design. We're just having to go back and redo some of the engineering that were based off of conservative design parameters, and so we're a little bit further behind there.
But that doesn't mean that compromise street might not be fixed.
No, and, and. No, we're, we're going to do that, and we're going to, and we're going to do that as quickly as we can, because I, we've all fully recognized that that's the area we flood the most frequently, and if, right, if we just didn't have the very high bids that came in, well in excess of the available budget, that project would be underway already. But, but since we did have, you know, what we call the bid bust, we, we had to look at all of those underlying, you know, what drove all those high costs, and so, so that's the redesign effort that is just now starting.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Savage.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry, Alderman.
I know, we were the same.
The hand went up.
So it's hard not to notice that the room is more full than normal for a council meeting, and it would really be interesting, when the time comes, to hear from you. I don't see anybody from the boat shows, but being a sailor, that's one of my particular interests, so I noticed on page 28, the slide, after we do the ordinance work this Monday, the next thing we're going to have is public input, and I, will be, I think that'll be an interesting meeting, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
So I was just taking a look at some of the photos here, and the last slide in particular, just trying to get an idea of how the buildings would look with the, the welcome, welcome center and the Burr's house, and also looking over to the other side, I noticed, you probably can't zoom in on that, but my colleagues zoom in, you actually do have the seawall coming down, I know it's not a seawall, but the protective wall coming down in front of the chop tank, stopping kind of right at the edge of the chop tank.
That's really early.
I know, but it shows you how it really should look, frankly, because you've got the wall, you actually have the walkway coming all the way around, which I think, which would be ideal for shores to have, and I actually thought I mentioned it earlier, is if we're going to be doing all this work, we really do what we can to get that walkway to continue all the way around city dock.
Completely agree.
That was in more of a.
That is exactly the goal.
Maybe we just get that deck to flip up on the left side.
Alderman Savage, we put this image up, this is a much earlier image, from early days when we were doing the city, from the city dock action committee, but we wanted to share with the council some of the thoughts at that early point of where the structures would be. Okay?
Alderman Turner.
Yes, thank you. In acknowledging the audience, I'm going to ask this question. Bryce, you showed a slide of your valuation of view sheds, correct? Do you have that slide?
Yes.
So is that the slide that you will present to Historic Preservation Commission as your analysis of the view shed?
There'll probably be a whole range of slides when we go before HPC.
To show that you're, you're.
Right.
Yes.
That's the intention, though, to show the view shed and whether there's an obstruction or what have you.
Right.
Okay. And then, to acknowledge the audience, it doesn't appear that any future boutique hotel is in the scope of work as of yet? Is that something that will be presented at a later date?
So that'll never be a part of our scope of work, that will always be a completely separate project, so. We're not in court, I mean, we're planning for there not to be a boutique hotel, because that's, that's, we have to make some design assumptions, and that's the best one for right now, is that there won't be one.
Okay. I'm just acknowledging who's in the audience, and I think that that, that is their interest, so thank you for answering my question.
So I would just like to point out that, you know, resiliency is expensive, right? And the challenges that are ahead of us are well beyond most municipalities' budgets in this country. We have to be creative, and I'd like to point out, if any of you get a chance to walk around the academy and go to the Furrigat Wall, it's between the Sailing Center and the most southern corner of the academy, that small section of wall there, which, which has ideal construction conditions, you have 100% access to it from the waterside, they have fenced off the construction area on the land side, that small section is $36 million. So then they're very, you know, a lot less challenges than we have, events, you know, businesses, boat traffic, all sorts of things like that. So, so that's kind of the idea of the price tag. I want to thank everybody who's here, because we have been successful to pull down millions and millions of dollars, not just because we had an idea, and everybody hears that there's all this federal money coming down to states and cities and all that. You don't get that money unless you have a good plan, and a well-designed plan, and well before I got here, people were working on these ideas, we built on that, and that's why we've been successful in getting historic amounts of, of grants for the city dock project. And I'll point out that we have an excellent team in place, just look behind city hall when you leave and see what Whiting-Turner have done to turn the garage around in one year. They have a construction schedule, we don't want to lose that construction schedule, that's the importance of passing this ordinance, so that they can stay on their construction schedule and stay with us and be as effective as they've been on the garage in getting city dock done. And the longer the, that we wait, the more we are exposed. So, the boutique fight is, hotel fight is over here, the waterfront welcome center fight, it could be over here, but the city dock and the raising of the section that we're engineering and we're constructing, the area that we must get complete to get that last tranche of money from FEMA, you know, that is, and so, we can't compromise on that, and every month we wait, or every week we wait, is one less week or month we've got to design the thing that gets us the final payment of that money. So, everything looks good on that FEMA huge grant, but, but you, we have to get to that point where it's confirmed 100%. Thank you. Alderman Annett, sorry.
So for a mayor that started with a plan for a Ferris wheel, we've come a long way.
That is in the second presentation. All right, any other things? Well, we've never had this many people at work session, there must be something going on. Thank you all for being here. Anything else for good order with the council? Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you.